Okay. I am calling the Monday, August 12th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting to order here at 6:30 PM. I... Tonight's meeting is in person, and you can also see us on Zoom. The public will be welcome to participate throughout the meeting. You can participate in person or join online via Zoom. Additional instructions on how to participate are posted online at www.burnsvillemn.gov, and that's in the Public Meeting Calendar section. As usual, our meeting is also available for viewing on BCTV and also on the city website. If you're unable to participate this evening and you'd like to submit public testimony, I encourage you to email your comments to city staff or mail your comments directly to City Hall. The Zoom instructions are zoom.us/join, and our meeting ID is 818-9494-0702. And once you're logged into the meeting, please use the chat feature to tell the moderator which item you wish to speak to. You may also call into the meeting... Do we still use the call-in feature? Okay, you're also able to call into the meeting on your phone. Our number is 651-372-8299. I think it's the same Zoom portal because the meeting ID is 818-9494-0272. For each public hearing, I'll open a time where callers may speak to that item, and I'll give you more instructions at that time. And your call will be muted until you are allowed in to speak. I don't know if I'm supposed to say this out loud, but it says Ken will be taking a commission photo following the meeting. Is that right? Okay, Ken will be taking a commission photo following the meeting. Our first item is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda from commissioners? None. Any from staff? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Braddock, seconded by John, to adopt the agenda as it's written. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Our second item, this is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, July 22nd, 2024. Are there any changes to the minutes from commissioners? Seeing none, any changes from staff? None. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
So moved.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our third item, this is a continued public hearing. This is the application of Paulo Souza for a variance and preliminary and final plat of the Souza addition located at 14910 Oakwood Drive. Kevin Shea will be our presenting planner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So tonight before you have the continued public hearing for Paulo Souza and the preliminary and final plat for Souza addition, which is to create a single lot at 14910 Oakwood Drive and the two variances for reduced front yard setback and wider driveway width associated with that plat. So the site location is 14910 Oakwood Drive. It is an existing site. Currently, they... It is an Outlet B of the initial addition that platted the area. So it's at .58 acres. It does back up to a park area. It is a single unplatted lot as it sits today, being Outlet B. The zoning is R1, one-family residential, and its land use is low-density residential. For the site, it does front on Oakwood Drive along the south lot line. It is the only lot along the north side of Oakwood Drive. Everything else is on the south side. It has no former uses. It's currently vacant or wooded. So with this proposal, by plating it, it would allow a single-family lot on the site. Give you a sense of the wetland and floodplain for the site as it does have a big factor in play here for the development of this site. There is the camram wetland on the backside of the site, along with a FEMA floodplain boundary as well. Both of those, I'll show on the next slide exactly where they are, but they do back up to the rear of the lot, so the north side of the lot. And it is a larger wetland complex that only impacts this lot for a smaller portion, but it is part of a larger complex. So here you'll see the existing site conditions. So it is Outlet B on the current site because of the certificate of survey, and that's what it is currently today. On the north side of the lot, the first line you see is the delineation... Here's the edge of water for the FEMA floodplain boundary, the ordinary high-water level. And then just a little bit further to the south from that is the wetland delineation for the type 3 wetland, which is that camram wetland. So you'll see that depicted on here. Those two items I mentioned specifically because those are the major impacts for why everything is pushed to the south side of the lot for the home, the driveway, everything like that, and the reason and the request for the variances. Also to note on here, you'll note that there's some fairly significant elevation change on here. It does go from about an 868 elevation down by the wetland and the floodplain up to the roadway is at an 892 elevation. So you've got some significant about 24 feet of grade change for the site. So with the plating request, on the image here is the site and grading plan for that to kind of show what the ultimate development would look like for the single-family lot. So you'll note that everything is pushed towards the road basically as far as possible. So one of the variance requests is to reduce the front yard setback from 30 feet as required to 20 feet, which is shown on this image, along with to allow a wider driveway width. Typically driveway width is measured, or the code requires it's measured at the property line. This driveway is 24 feet, which is the maximum allowed width at the curb line. And by the right-of-way line, where we typically measure the width, it's 30 feet 6 inches. So that's the difference there. So they do have the maximum required driveway width at the curb line, but not once you reach the property line. So that's the variance request is to allow a wider driveway width at that right-of-way line, which is about 15 feet behind the curb line. You can also see that it has the proposed garage off the driveway that's shown on the site plan, along with the walkout for the home. Two other notable items on the site plan here along behind the home and the garage is a retaining wall. So as it's depicted on here, that basically creates some backyard for them to use. Otherwise, it's all sloped down towards the wetland and the floodplain. There's also another retaining wall on the east side of the garage. So coming off the front of the garage, then the east side, that's another retaining wall. That also creates a little bit of front yard space, and then it essentially drains down or is sloped down from there as well. So that... Those two retaining walls kind of define the buildable area or the usable area of the lot as compared to the lot as a whole. So that's kind of the site as a whole depicted for what it's proposed to be. It does meet all the other standards for impervious surface area, size of the home, everything like that. So I'll talk through the variances. So the preliminary and final plat are one request to do a single lot. The two variances that are requested. One is to reduce the front yard setback from 30 to 20, so a 10-foot reduction. The other is to have a wider driveway width of 30.5, 30 feet 6 inches versus 24 feet. The main reasoning for these requests as directed by staff was to give adequate buffering from that camram wetland. Camram wetland is a very high-quality wetland, very rare in Minnesota. And so giving adequate space between there and the buildable area was very important. And it allows us to preserve that wetland area as there's a 50-foot setback from that camram wetland. So staff directed the applicants have basically moved the home as far away as possible as they could. The reason this request comes up now versus back when the subdivision was initially platted is there was no delineation of the wetland done. And so when it was done, the boundary was found to be farther away, allowing the buildable space on this lot to increase to allow a home on the lot where previously it was thought to be unbuildable. But with the delineation, it was shown to be less impactful on the lot than what was previously thought. So with that, staff did come up with some findings of fact for the variance to show the hardship. And so because this preserves the camram wetland and allows us to still move the home forward, and it doesn't create a precedent because there's no homes planned on the other side, on the north side of Oakwood Drive versus all the homes existing on the south side, we would not look to do this for other lots that would be on that side of the road. It allows additional tree preservation of the slopes, along with the trees that are on those slopes on-site. And the area still meets all the requirements for impervious surface and things like that and has adequate space for stormwater to drain, meeting the standards as well. So those are the reasons that staff found for the variance. So with that, staff does recommend to the planning commission to recommend to the city council approval of the variance to reduce the front yard setback from 30 to 20 feet and allow a driveway width of 30 feet 6 inches versus the standard 24 at the property line and a preliminary and final plat to create a one-lot subdivision at 14910 Oakwood Drive, subject to the conditions and the staff report. So there are seven conditions all associated with that will be taken care of following approval and prior to a building permit. So with that, this is a continued public hearing, so technically we're in the public hearing right now. But I'll stand for any questions from the commission, and then you can ask the applicant as well.
Can you read the conditions?
Sure.
Just so we have them read out loud for the record?
Yep. So the project shall be completed in accordance with the plans submitted and as amended by the conditions of approval. Any significant modifications to the plans as determined by planning staff shall require review and approval by the planning commission and city council. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the final plat shall be recorded with Dakota County. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, all outstanding comments in the city engineering memo dated June 12th, 2024 shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the city engineer. Prior to the release of the final plat for recording at Dakota County, all development fees in the amount of $10,019.82 shall be paid. The wetland buffer shall be maintained at its natural state as shown on the proposed wetland buffer plan. As-constructed plans or as-built plans shall be provided to the city prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Stormwater runoff from the site shall not be directed to the wetland.
Thank you. Any... And thank you for the presentation. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Timmerman.
Thank you, Kevin. The... Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Kevin. The property is kind of unique here. Can you give us just a little bit background, more background, on how this standalone parcel either remained when there was a development or came to be? When I look at the county property records, it's kind of interesting to see this one property that just stands out as its own lot.
So, I mean, it goes way back. The initial plat was in December of 1955. So it's been this way for, what is that, 68 years, 70 years, something like that? So with that, basically when there was the data back in 1955, this lot became Outlet B as an area. It's basically accessed the camram wetland from Oakwood Drive. It was platted separately, is not part of the overall area. However, they didn't deem it to be buildable at that point because the evaluation with the technology they had at that point did not identify that the wetland was as little impact to the site as it shows on the wetland delineation that we have now. So with that, basically, the site was essentially changed from being an unbuildable lot to a buildable lot based on the impact and the buffer, the real one being the camram wetland and the buffer that's required from that. When you... Previously, it was thought to be more in the center of the site. So when you get the 50-foot buffer from the edge of the wetland and a 50-foot buffer, the site's no longer buildable. When you move it as far north as it's now shown on the wetland delineation, and then you get the 50-foot buffer, now you have enough space to fit a home. So that's kind of how this came to be.
Interesting little piece of property there. Thanks. Any other questions from commissioners? Seeing none, we will open this, the public hearing to the public. Public part of the public hearing, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to this matter, please approach the podium and... And if there's anyone on Zoom... Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to speak to this matter? Okay. And... Oh, okay. Please, if you could state your name and address for the public record.
Okay, my name is Paulo Souza. I'm the current owner of that lot. And my address is 2408 Oakwood Drive. I bought the lot back in 2021 as part of the other two lots that was available right across the street there. And developed the first house, and we're going through the second one and trying to work on the last one. Does anyone... Any question?
Any questions for the applicant? No questions, but thank you. Thank you for coming today.
Hello, I'm John Faraci. I'm with Lake and Land Surveying. I'm the engineer and the land surveyor that did the plans here in plating the property. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those, too.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have questions for the engineer? Commissioner Timmerman, questions in general? Timmerman, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Mr. Shea, the question I have is normally when there's a development, we notify neighbors. I assume we went through standard notification, no feedback from neighbors?
Correct. We notified the adjacent properties and received no feedback via email or in-person or comment cards or anything like that.
Okay, real good, thanks.
If there are, you know, if there are no more questions for the applicants, or you have a question for the applicant?
Yeah, just a quick question.
Sure.
As far as flooding or anything like that, you have no concerns with that at all?
No, we're 24 feet higher than the wetland in the ordinary high-water elevation.
That's the height, okay. All right. I guess that would be all I have.
Yeah, I think the basement floor is like 888, right? Because that one says 887. So it's quite a bit higher than the water level. So see, do you have a question for the applicant? Commissioner Anderson?
Either that or Kevin. How will the drainage be put on the lot so that it drains toward the street instead of toward the wetland?
Is that something you can answer? Okay, thank you.
Your exercise.
Yeah, the... Well, you can put a hip roof on it and bring all the water to the front. You could put a flat roof on it and put all the water to the front. The plan is a concept plan, and the exact plans that he's going to build are going to be kind of like what we're proposing, but not 100% yet because he doesn't know yet. Because we still have to get it platted in order for it to be a buildable lot. So hopefully that answers your questions. You can bring the gutters around and then downspouts going towards the street. There will be some grading, you know, in the green areas to the rear as there are right now. In fact, there will probably be less water going to the rear than what's going there now, if you understand what I'm saying, because of the roof, which may be a bad thing. But that was one of the comments that the city engineer wanted, was the water to come to the front. And also the DNR was requesting that, so.
Yeah, and the front yard will drain to the street.
That's correct.
Yeah, and the roof, whatever hits the roof can be directed also to the street. Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, we will close our public hearing at 6:47. And I'll open it up for discussion. Any further discussion from commissioners or questions? Or... Commissioner John?
Yeah, I actually went and saw the site, and I was actually impressed. All solid the ground was. I was expecting a little bit of sog. So it does seem like an interesting, like Commissioner Timmerman says, seems like an interesting place. So with that, I would like to make a motion that we recommend to city council approval of the variance to reduce the front yard setback from 30 feet to 20 feet and allow the driveway width to be 30 feet 6 inches versus the standard 24 feet at the property line and preliminary plat and final plat for the creation of one-lot subdivision at 14910 Oakwood Drive, subject to the seven conditions that Mr. Shea laid out earlier.
There's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
We'd like to thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item, this is a public hearing. This will be the application of Arco Murray for a planned unit development amendment to allow a health club use at 151 Cliff Road East. Kevin Shea is our presenting commissioner... Or presenting planner, I'm sorry. Mr. Shea.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Yeah, tonight before you, we have another public hearing for Tyler Craig is the representative of Arco Murray for this site. It is for a PUD amendment to allow health club uses at 151 Cliff Road East. So the site location off Cliff Road East, the site is 4.57 acres. It is a single-developed parcel with an existing complex or one single building that serves multiple uses. The zoning is B3, general business with a PUD. So they do have an existing PUD. And then the land use is business retail office. So as far as lot frontage is, it does front on Cliff Road East. That's where all the access comes from. Or the former use, that's a holdover. The proposal is to do a PUD amendment to allow health club uses as part of the existing PUD. So the existing PUD is what would be amended with this proposal. As far as the site as a whole, I just put the floor plan on here. There's no exterior changes happening with this application. So the parking lot, landscaping, sidewalks, building exterior, all that stays the same. They're just proposing to amend or essentially renovate the interior of the building. So this is being classified as a health club use, but there are a couple of various uses in here. The yellow, as you'll look on the screen here, is for office space essentially for the operation piece of the use. The blue is for batting cages. So they do have, because it's batting cages along with office space and some health-type uses, that's how it's being classified. So there are five batting cages shown on the floor plan, along with about 2,000 roughly square feet of office lobby space for like sports training, office consultations, things like that. So that is their proposal. The batting cages would be on the south side. So this is north facing up on this. So with that, because it is a PUD, we have to establish PUD benefits for it. So the proposed use of a health club is considered a permitted use in the B3 district. So that is, as you might remember, we recently came through with an ordinance amendment two meetings ago, maybe three now, to allow health club uses as a permitted use in the B1, 2, and 3 district. That has since been adopted or passed through city council. So it is listed as a permitted use in that B3 district. So the proposed use does not conflict with the business functions of the surrounding businesses within the complex. Proposed use will not pose a significant detrimental risk to the health, safety, and general welfare of occupants of surrounding lands because of its compatibility. And the proposed use of a health club is consistent with the business retail office land use in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan as it provides a variety of uses within the district. So there's a number of PUD benefits. They don't have any deviations as part of this because it is a permitted use in the underlying zoning district. The only reason they needed the approval is because of the existing PUD not allowing a health club use consistent with the zoning ordinance. So it has been pretty standard practice as things like this come in that we essentially amend. And this did not get the additional... Did it update Kevin for here? Because it doesn't look like the condition got changed in here. So we added a condition. So there would be five in here on the recommendation there should be. So we do recommend to the city council that the planning commission recommended the city council approval of the application of Tyler Craig with Arco Murray for a PUD amendment to allow health club uses as a permitted use in the existing PUD located at 151 Cliff Road East, subject to... So there were four conditions. Staff did include, it will be in the rezoning or the PUD ordinance document. We added it here as a condition just for clarity. Typically, when a PUD comes in, one of the standard conditions staff puts on is that all permitted uses in the underlying zoning district are hereby allowed within the PUD. That essentially makes it so we don't have to come back for every time where they'd request what's already a permitted use in the underlying zoning district as part of a PUD that was adopted prior to the current zoning ordinance. So that's kind of what we've been doing as all PUD applications come in. So if you remember, we had a couple that came back for... Oh, I can't remember all the applications. But there's a couple of recent ones that have come in for PUD amendments similar to this for a new use that's already allowed in the underlying zoning district. We do that so we don't have to come back for every subsequent use that would be allowed in the underlying zoning district. So we're asking the commission to add that condition tonight. So it'd be subject to the four conditions shown here, plus that fifth condition, which will be part of the PUD ordinance that would come before city council if this was recommended for approval. So with that, if there's any questions for myself or other staff, I'd be happy to answer those.
Can you... Do you mind reading the four conditions?
Oh, yeah. Let me do that again.
I don't know if you... Do you have access to the fifth condition? And then we can...
I've got the text.
Again, just so we read it out loud for the record, so.
Yep. I'll do the four, Kevin, and then you can add on the last one. So the project shall be completed in accordance with the plans submitted and as amended by the conditions of approval. Any significant modifications to the plans as determined by planning staff shall require review and approval by the planning commission and city council. The conditions existing for the planned unit development shall remain in full force and effect. All signage shall be regulated by the sign ordinance, and a sign permit is required. No exterior storage shall be permitted.
And then we have that the uses in the underlying zoning district as permitted and/or accessory uses are allowed in addition to the specific uses in the approved planned unit development.
Thank you. And thank you for explaining that. Questions from commissioners? Commissioner John?
So is the whole building going to be the batting cages? Or is it... Are there other... I mean, you had the office area and all that, but it looked like there was more to that building than just that. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. There's a lot more building space than just the batting cage area. So if you look on the aerial here, the building is quite a large building with a lot of parking. You know, a couple, like over 100 and something spaces on the site. The batting cage area on here is just about 6,000 square feet, give or take of the actual total office or space interior to the building, which does not take up the entire building.
Just one section. In the background, you talked about 155 parking spots. That's why I was curious. So they wouldn't have all 155 parking spots?
No, they would...
Not that that would be needed.
No, I mean, there's adequate parking on them for the space to use. I think in the staff report, it was, we expect them to use somewhere in the ballpark of like 35 to 50 spaces. But they could require or be allowed up to 96 parking spaces. But they have well over that to allow the use on the site to have adequate parking for the use.
For everybody else as well, right?
Correct, yep.
I guess that's where I was going. All right, thank you.
Any other questions for the city planner before I open up the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, we will open up the public hearing at 6:56 PM. If there's anybody in the room that'd like to speak to the matter, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you all tonight? My name is Preston Woods. I'm actually here in lieu of Tyler Craig and the representative for Arco Murray tonight. My address is 1001 Nicollet Avenue South, Bloomington, Minnesota. And yeah, just really, this project through and through, I think could be a great element to your guys' community and just wanted to open up the floor to any other additional questions that you may have, so.
Thank you, yeah. It's... Is this... So it's going to be open to the public? Or is it for private training or what? Just, I'm just curious.
I would imagine for mixed use.
Yeah.
For both public and private.
Great. Any questions from commissioners? No questions, thank you. Thank you very much, yeah.
Thank you.
Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to speak to this matter?
Nobody on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. So seeing none, we'll close the public hearing here at 6:57. And I'll open this up to commissioners for discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion if there's no discussion. As the father of two young baseball players who I'm sure would be very interested in your project, I would like to move that the planning commission recommended the city council approval of the application made by Tyler Craig with Arco Murray for planned unit development amendment to allow health clubs as a permitted use within the existing PUD located at 151 Cliff Road East, subject to the conditions we've discussed tonight.
There's a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Motioned and seconded. We'll put it to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We will move on to our... Before I move on to updates, I guess the first update is that our commission photograph has been canceled for this evening because we're missing Commissioner Hamilton and we're missing city planner Deb Gross. So next time perhaps. So any updates from... Any other updates from commissioners?
Vote tomorrow.
Vote tomorrow? Okay, primary election, right? Yeah, thank you. Any updates from staff?
Yeah, one quick one. Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. So at the August 5th city council meeting, the city council approved a PUD amendment for Unity Catholic High School that you guys previously discussed. That was addressing the enrollment number in that PUD. So the council approved that. And the council also approved the Andrew Stallman zoning code amendment that Kevin just talked about in relation to this application before us tonight. So that's all got approved at the last meeting. That was on August 5th. Last week was night to night. City staff, over 70 staff members, visited over 125 parties. So it was a busy night, but luckily the weather was great and everything. So we had good turnout there. And our next meeting is Monday.